I'd like to call to order the November 13th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. I'll ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Larray?
Here.
Mr. Appone is absent. Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Moore is absent. Chairman Moffitt is here, and we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approve of the agenda. If there are no additions or subtractions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the October 9th meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Let's see, we've got five, six items of substance on the agenda this evening. The first being site plan number 23-23, Vito Castellano for VIP Homes, if the petitioner's here, or representative. Again, anyone that speaks this evening, I need a name and an address. And then when you're done speaking, sign in on the sheet next to the podium.
Can I move this a little bit?
Sure. Ah, hang on. Yeah, I need it for the TV, so actually the answer would be no.
James Sarkony, 12900 Hall Road, Sterling Heights, Suite 350, on behalf of the applicant, VIP Homes and Vince Castellano, with O'Reilly Rancilio PC. We're here on the site plan approval, seeking site plan review approval to our, with respect to our proposed self-storage facility. We've received the comments, or reviewed the comments, from the planner, from the engineer, along with other departments. We had the benefit of doing that. Last meeting got tabled because there wasn't a quorum. We've gone back and we've incorporated those comments, and we'll call it necessary revisions, into our drawings, which does not be, the council does not have that set, but we assure you that what we would be presenting eight copies of would include those various updates, noting the easements and right-of-way on our plans, revising the photometrics to meet the ordinance. The parking spaces, we revised our calculation of the area of square footage for office space. We've reduced the parking space requirement from 17 to 15, and we have noted those on the updated drawings. We've shortened one of the buildings on the north, the northwest corner, so it's the second building in, on the northwest corner of the property. We've shortened that building to add four parking spaces at the outside of that building there, and of course, there's 11 in the front. That's where we're going to find our 15 parking spaces. We adjusted the facade to provide the masonry that was requested by the township. We've added masonry to three out of the four elevations from, since our last submittal, or not submittal, our last time before the township. 70 feet of masonry to the south elevation, 90 feet on the north elevation, and an additional 20 feet on the east elevation. Based upon comments we received from the township, we also added windows. I think it's approximately 40 feet of windows on the south side of the building. So the masonry elements have been updated. We're using split-face block. We've brought an example or a demonstration of that material. This would be the split-face block. That's going to be on the majority of this project. This is the smooth-face block accents that we also are going to use. Then we've got metal. One element, one element of the project is an architectural element. You'll all notice at the front, so we'll call that the southwest corner of the main building, there's a protrusion on the north, I'm sorry, at the front of this property, and that is an architectural element that exceeds the zoning ordinance for the height. So the building itself is within the zoning ordinance, the height for this three-story building. However, we are proposing that we get to do a architectural element that would exceed that height. It would just extend up on the outside of the building and be basically constructed of metal, and this is one of the, this is the color we're thinking. So it's not as bold as the color appears on the slide, and that will help.
That's a two-foot request?
That's correct. That'll be a two-foot request. So that brings me to the next point, as we, about two and a half, we anticipate or not anticipate, if we are able to get the site plan approval, we know it would be subject to obtaining the variances. We believe it would be three variances, not four, because we will meet the parking, the 15 spots, not 17. So we will be going to the ZBA for a variance relative to that height, that two-and-a-half-foot height element. Obviously, if that ultimately does not come back, though we think it should, well, in that case, it shouldn't stop the project. We just have to adjust that element there. And there's already screening provided for the rooftop units that would otherwise accomplish what we're looking to do with that element. The next would be for the fence. So the plan calls for fencing, which would be within the front yard setback, and we believe that the uniqueness of this corner lot, and obviously, the type of development that we're looking to do here, necessitates a fence. We have one drawing in particular that, I think, so demonstrates that the particular fence, and then I'll get to the doors, it will not have any material impact on the public. We will be having a berm that's going to go in, I think it's approximately a four-foot tall berm, and it'll be landscaped with trees that will obscure any potential view of the fencing, and also would obscure any view of the roll-up doors. So we're going to be seeking a variance from the ordinance, I think it's 5.22. D, relative to the loading and unloading doors that we would have that are within the front yard setback. So these would be eight-foot doors, is it eight?
Yes.
Eight-foot doors, I think we have 20, is it 20? 20, so there's going to be 20 doors.
I want both these gentlemen to introduce themselves and their addresses.
I'm sorry. Joe Guido is our architect.
Joe Guido, I'm the project architect, 23419 Ford Road in Dearborn.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Vito.
Vito Castellano, 52188 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, representing ownership.
The point being is, we believe that that ordinance pertains to more of an industrial use, the loading and unloading of semi-trailers for commercial businesses, and what we're looking to do is get that variance so that we could have these eight-foot roll-up doors for people who are storing their personal items in our climate-controlled facility during normal business hours. So we're talking between 8 o'clock and perhaps 5:00, 8 o'clock and 6:00 PM on a weekday. We have two controlled entrances to the property, one at the southwest end, which we've also increased that driveway width by, to 26 feet. And then we've added, per, I think, comments from the fire department, we've added a second entry point, which is at the northwest corner of the property. But the point I'm trying to make is that there shouldn't be any material impact on traffic with this, because the U-Haul or F-150, that would be going up to the storage unit to load on, we believe, an irregular basis, will be fully on our property, would not be on mound or on 23 Mile Road, impeding any of the traffic. That corridor is already heavily trafficked by Amazon and other commercial uses, but we don't think that will add any additional impact to that. Trying to think if I missed something that I specifically wanted to bring up here. So with those three variances, which we will go to the ZBA for, we think that we have a project that meets the, I think, the requests and the comments of both this panel and I think the engineering department, and I think what the public would want generally, available to answer any questions that you may have about what we're proposing today.
Okay, thank you. Planner, for your comments, please.
Thank you, Chairman Moffitt. The proposed self-storage facility is a use-by-right in this light manufacturing zoning district. Other than, we had undergone a preliminary review and ironed out most of those comments other than the variance requests that they are proposing. So I don't have any issues with the point variance, since it's only to the corner facade of the building. The parking requirements, they addressed, as far as loading and unloading, again, that's something that the, up to the planning commission, if they will provide support for that, for zoning board of appeals, and then also the fence in the front yard setback. I did meet with the applicant a few weeks ago, I believe it was, and we did address and go through the facade materials, so what they are proposing is a little bit modified than the plans that you have in front of you. So I'm satisfied with all the building materials and all the architectural features that they are currently proposing.
Okay. Now, I remember that when the preliminary review was done, there were some assertions that the DPW had signed off on, both the wall and the plantings being in the easement.
Correct. Prelimarily, I spoke to the applicant, and being that this berm is going to be located in a DPW easement, I had recommended that they speak to them to make sure that this berm is even feasible, and Department of Public Works permitted these plantings in that easement.
All right, they communicated that to you?
Yes.
That it won't be an issue going forward?
Correct.
Okay. Makes the project a lot more palatable to have that kind of screening on 23 Mile without it. It makes it an entirely different, I think, conversation, so. To the board, anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing done, as you're, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Turner.
I move to approve site plan number 23-23 for Vito Castellano for VIP Homes, located on the northeast corner of 23 Mile Road and Mound Road for a climate-controlled self-storage facility, based on the applicant submitting eight sets of complete plans addressing all the planning commission, department, and engineers' comments. The planning commission also recommends support for the three required variances. Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Larray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Chair Wachess, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
See, I didn't miss you this time, Commissioner Baker.
I'm sick of that.
Heard you coughing. Next item is site plan 23-33, Chris Synacory. Gentlemen, sign in, please.
Michael DiAgostini, 15801 23 Mile Road, Macomb Township, Michigan, here with Quadra Construction, representing Synacory for this project.
What are you requesting of, from this body?
We're just requesting a site plan approval. Synacory's been there for close to 10 years. They're just wanting to modernize the property, a complete facade renovation that'll be comprised of masonry, glass, simulated wood panel, and architectural metal panel, and then a complete renovation of the interior. Those plans have already gone through building, and questions have all been answered.
Landscape, any landscape?
Well, they are landscapers, so they're going to plant one bush right in the center, and that's it.
Didn't say they were good landscapers.
Yeah, they intend to, with the renovation, it'll be a complete redo of the front landscaping as well.
All right, thank you. To the planner?
Chairman Moffitt, thank you. The facade modifications and site improvements are consistent with our zoning ordinance. The only thing that I just wanted to bring to the table is that they're proposing polymer siding for the facade, so that would be up to the planning commission to approve that type of facade material, because it's out of our, technically, our ordinance.
What's the, what's the planning department's?
Approval.
Okay.
This is a previously approved product as well. We've used on a, I don't remember the address, but it's facing 23 Mile Road on the corner of Oro and 23 Baker Industries. We did it two years ago, same material.
No conflict?
No.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions or comments? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Snyder?
Move to approve site plan 23-33, Chris Synacory for Synacory Landscaping, 47631 Ryan Road, parcel number 230730-426-011, located on the south side of Hamlin Road, on the west side of Ryan Road, facade renovations and site modifications. The approval is subject to the submission of final site plans addressing all department, engineering, and planning commission comments.
Support. Moved by Snyder, support by Meredith. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Chair Wachess, good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is site plan number 21-20, Antoinette DiLorenzo. Now, I'm assuming a good chunk of the folks in the audience here are concerned with this issue. We had a public hearing before, this isn't a public hearing. If something is raised that's new to, and that wasn't presented last time, I'll offer, you know, the opportunity for someone to comment, or the group to comment, but I'm not, this isn't, the purpose isn't to revisit everything that we went through before. So, not a public hearing. I'll let them offer what changes they made since we last met. I'll then, with a very, 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 very short leash, allow folks that want to come up and comment on that specifically, but if it goes back into all the issues that we are aware that exist with this development, then I'm just going to bring it back to the board. Because the purpose on this is for us just to get all the information we can to make a recommendation to the board, to the Board of Trustees, that ultimately make the decision. With that... Name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. I'm Odette Georges. I'm the architect at Gateway Engineering, 8155 Ansbury Drive.
Tell you what, see if you can get a little closer to that mic, or put it up a little bit, or yell.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm Odette with Gateway Engineering, and I'm the architect at 8155 Ansbury Drive. And I also have Matej Gandhi with me, and he's the engineer on this project, as well as Mr. DiLorenzo and Antoinette DiLorenzo, and they're the owners of this project. So we're basically back in reference to Emerald Creek subdivision, and we're happy to share that we were able to adjust the site plan according to your feedback, and we were able to increase the width of the road to 26 feet, which would accommodate the fire lane as well as street parking. And yeah, that's pretty much, so if you have any additional questions, we're here to answer them.
How many parking spots did you add, then?
Matej Gandhi from Gateway Engineering, 8155 Ansbury Drive, Shelby Township. We did not calculate the exact number of the parking, but along the perimeter of the pond, throughout, we will get the parking, guest parking.
Because I think what was requested, or was some designated parking, and I believe Mr. Turner was the one that had offered that. And then there was a second, the issue with just the access to the site through the private road, and that there were some promises made that there were going to be communication, so we think, on how that was going to work with the neighbors, the existing neighborhood.
Mr. Dollar?
Let's go parking, okay, you going to talk about parking?
Parking and the side of the road.
Name and address.
My name is Vincent DiLorenzo. I am from 978 North Creek Drive, Rochester, Michigan. Last time we were here, you wanted the road to be widened to 26 feet instead of 24. Originally was 24, so we made it 26. So the new plan, the road is 26 foot wide. Secondly, we have already met with the other owners of the access road coming in, and we're to, we've talked to them, and they, once this is approved, we will be sitting down with them and coming up to an agreement to videotape the road and make sure that any additional damage, if we do it, that we would take care of it. But we're not going to meet with them until we know what we're going to do here. So the plan is to get approved, and then go back to them and sit down with them, and come up with the videotaping of the road, and enter into an agreement with Emerald Creek Number Two to come in and allow us to, this way, they won't have to worry about any damage to the street. But we have the right to use the road, both roads, all the roads in that project, according to our master plan.
Mr. Kirk, I'm going to ask you to weigh in just a little bit, because this is a private road. What authority, yeah?
The original master deed reserved easements in the other parts of the property. It's a private agreement between the property owners, I need to say.
So, again, I'm not asking, you know, not on the record, even though we are being televised here, but if he were to cause damage exercising that easement, then would that be a civil issue between the two parties?
That's correct. If there's no public roads, we have no authority.
We have no, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, to the planner for her comments.
Thank you, Chairman. So as Mr. DiLorenzo and his colleagues noted, that they increased the road width from 24 feet to 26 feet. Now, this would allow for parking on one side of the road, and the parking would be permitted on the opposite side of the fire hydrants, as far as that goes. So they have the ability to park all the way around the lake, depending on how many parking spaces that is, I'm not sure. But as far as that's concerned, I don't have any issues with that. We have a number of developments in the township that have either no parking on either side of the road, or more commonly now, parking on one side of the road. So as far as that's concerned, I don't have any issues with it. I think previously I said the product they're proposing is consistent, you know, with what we're looking for in the township, with brick on all four elevations. This property is zoned R7, which is multiple-family, so they're proposing a small, single-family development, and they have the ingress, points of ingress and egress, according to what our ordinance requires, which is one through the apartment complex and through Emerald Creek 1 and 2.
Okay. So I think the only other remaining issue, there's quite a bit of conversation about the ponds, and there's parts that can be filled in, some diverted, that one that they will be able to hold whatever the fill. And then the second question is just water retention, or a place to move the water. From what I saw, the township's engineer, although final engineering doesn't get approved until the plan is further along in the process, seemed comfortable with what was proposed for that purpose. You're nodding, yeah?
Yeah, that is correct. This is just a preliminary review at this point. So we have had the applicant meet with our engineers numerous times to make sure that what they are proposing is even feasible. During this time, if this plan is approved, they would need to go back to engineering and complete all the engineering for this site, including obtaining permits from the county, necessary permits from the county. And then, once that has all been done, they would come back for final approval, and it would go to the township board as well, just like this plan would go to the township board.
Okay. And the county public works department was, has been communicated with on?
They have also, yes, they have also met with the Macomb County Drain Commission on this project.
Okay. Okay, to the board with any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, there was three variances that we had to approve last time, if we went ahead with the plan as it was. So one of the variants was the road, and that was it. I'm trying to remember the last, the three, there are three variants that we had to worry about if we approved this, that they would have to come to the zoning commission. Remember that?
I remember the road. I'm going to rely on the planner.
Yeah, there's no variances with this, because this site is zoned multiple-family, and they're proposing a single-family product. So it's up to the planning commission to, you know, to make any modifications to lot sizes, setbacks, so on and so forth. So based on what they're proposing, the setbacks are consistent with like an R1C zoning requirement, but...
That was one, yeah, I believe that was one of the questions, okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Turner.
Question from Mr. DiLorenzo, or anybody on your team. Last time I did bring up a question about some centralized overflow parking in addition to the road. We talked about expanding the road, but I also said about, asked you about some centralized area for parking, and I noted that you didn't do that. Is there a reason why you decided against doing that?
Well, the comment that you guys voted on was to make the road 26 feet. There was no question to us to do centralized parking. I don't think you mentioned that at the time.
Yes, I did.
Well, if you did, we...
I could read through the minutes, but I know what I said. I'm just asking you, is there some reason why you decided not to do that? Because I can see, if you have a birthday party, graduation party, or a wake or something, and people are parked up and down the street, it's, depending on how many people you have there, it still could be a hardship for everybody living there.
Well, most of those houses have double garages. They're not a single fam, it's not a one driveway, it's a double driveway. So therefore, you have plenty of parking in the garages, and in the driveway. Secondly, you'll be able to park on the road, which, we made the road wider. I mean, I don't know how to do it any other way without changing the whole plan. I mean, the way it's done right now, it works. I mean, the planner is fine with it, and the engineers are fine with it, and we did make the road two feet wider than normal.
Point taken, but okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's why, knowing how many spots, how many parking spots you did add would have been helpful tonight.
By looking at it, looking at it, all the lots, all the units we have designed 40 feet wide, there are about 40 lots around it, so at least 50 to 60 parking.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, I think we have to appreciate the comment by our planner, that this property is zoned R7, a higher density than what is being proposed here today. So I think we have to appreciate that comment, what could be here versus what is being proposed to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you for, just now for a second. Does anyone wish to comment on anything that was proposed? Okay, saying no? I'm sorry?
This is the first meeting I've ever been to.
So the process usually works as we have a public hearing, to which anyone can come up and offer whatever comments or questions. We had that for this request. There were a couple of questions, as you may have gathered, that needed to be resolved before we were going to make a decision. We're not to that point. So we've had the public hearing, so we've heard the public. They've offered to answer a couple of the questions. It's not, I'm saying if anyone wants to comment, in fairness, that on the expansion of the road, I think it's, we've got a little clarity on the easement that they have coming through that access, and then the drainage and the engineering and that process on the ponds, you know, I'm willing to entertain, you know, to make sure we're clear on what, how, we understand it to make a recommendation to the board.
I'm just moving into this subdivision, and maybe I'm stupid, but are they talking about filling in that creek?
No, no. No, they're going to adjust the ponds a little bit around the edges and expand it a little bit, but for the most part, it's going to maintain itself. You can all sit down.
At the last meeting, Mr. DiLorenzo promised to contact...
Name and address.
My name is David Stinch, 14918, Steenbrook. At the last meeting, Mr. DiLorenzo promised to contact Emerald Creek 1 on any future damage that may be caused by his project.
And he addressed, he addressed what, how he's, you know, he's going to do it, he wants to do it afterwards. That's why I asked the attorney on, can that be an issue that the township, that this body weigh in on? The agreement that you have as homeowners in that division grants him an easement. Now, that easement, if he destroys it, then you may have a civil case against him to fix it, because he destroyed something that you paid for, you know, but that's not something that we can weigh in on, because it's not a public road, and it's not the township's resources that are at risk. Okay. Okay.
I was here at the last meeting and I've been comments and I wanted to comment on this road. Stony Brook Drive is 29 feet wide with four-foot sidewalks on both sides. And we have parking on the west side of the road. And if we have any extra people come in, there's our times when you have to play dodgem cars to get through our road and our road is three foot wider than the proposed road. So another thing is, I don't know if these units are going to have basements or not because we had trouble with our units where the water would come into our basements because they dug a lot of the basements too deep. And so there's still several buildings in our complex who have wet basement floors and have to run humidifiers and their pumps run all the time. And anytime it starts to rain, my sump pump runs and I think every one of my neighbors' sump pump run. Water is a real headache and they're gonna be about three feet lower than we are right now. And if that's the case, water always wins.
Okay. Ma'am, did you want to comment?
Can I just stand right here?
No, you need to come up. Hey, hang on, sir, let's, you can go after her.
Oh, okay.
My name is Judy Macklem and I live at 14901 Stony Brook Drive. I just have a question, we asked the last time, are they still gonna have this access that's gonna come through the apartments, that it goes through the road that they mentioned?
Yes.
Because that means, I mean, myself personally, that's gonna have a lot of people from the apartments all come through ours.
We addressed that the last time.
Okay, but...
I mean, it's an issue and we're aware of it.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
We'll take that into account when we make a decision.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. But I do wanna thank you guys also for fixing across the ditch when we pull out of our entranceway. There's not as many accidents and it's very nice.
Trustee Cassaly, thank you.
Thank you very, very much, it's wonderful.
Okay, sir.
Okay, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One is that our agreement to repair the roads is worthless because Phase One is 32 years old and it's still not finished and he still hasn't done the first repair to the road.
All right. Understanding that's a private issue between the parties, so go ahead.
Okay, fine. This is really hard to see what's on this or on that. I mean, talk about, but...
All right, sir, we're talking about, we're talking about the three issues that we, that were raised this evening.
Okay, what are they gonna do with the edges of the ponds to retain them?
That's, between them and the engineer, we'll work that out in engineering.
Okay, because ours are just clay and over the past 25 years, they moved.
Hang on. The township employees, at a great expense, engineers that monitor everything that we do within the township.
Oh geez, I hope they do their job better than they did last time.
Well...
All right.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll bring this back to the...
Chairman, if you can sign in and state his name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone who spoke needs to sign in, so can you sign in, sir? Thank you. Okay, back to the board. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cassaly.
I move to recommend approval to the township board for preliminary site plan special land use application number 21-20 for Antoinette DiLorenzo for Emerald Creek Four, based on the applicant addressing all the department comments and the engineer's comments and allow the applicant to proceed with the final engineering plans.
Please, your support?
Support.
Moved by Cassaly, supported by Baker. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Cassaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
No.
Commissioner Meredith?
No.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
No.
Chair votes yes. The recommendation will be, will go from a 4-3 vote in favor to the board. Next item is Site Plan Special Land Use Number 23-20, Chad Asman. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the secretary to read the notice published.
Yes. The Charter Township of Shelby Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of an addition to an existing special land use site. Application Chad Asman, RLA Studio 915 Windstone Circle North, Oakland, Michigan 48363. Proposed use is church building addition modification. Location 47905 Hayes Road, south of 22 Mile Road, west of Hayes Road. Site plan SLU Number 23-20. Legal decibel number 23-07-25-400-017. The legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, November 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Building, Boardroom 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan 48316-5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site plan special land use. The application for the site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during that public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. Seventy-eight property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on October 4th, 2023.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And can you, while the mic is hot, can you explain the uses under the present zoning and whether this special land use request is appropriate?
This is R1B zoning district, which basically is residential but for churches and these type of uses, a special land use can be requested and is one of the permitted uses with approval.
Great, thank you. The format for the public hearing would be as follows. The petitioner or representative will come up and explain what they're requesting and the reasons for it, then bring it to the board to ask any questions of the petitioner. I'll then open it up to the public to offer any questions or comments they may have for the request and then I'll bring the petitioner back up to answer any questions that were raised during that time, at which point I'll ask the petitioner or representative to come up. And again, anyone that speaks needs to name, address, and sign in.
Good evening. Chad Asman, 915 Windstone Circle North, Oakland, Michigan 48363. I am the architect, speaking on behalf of Shelby Bible Church. We are coming back for a special land use. We had already come through, gotten our special land use. And then in our conversations, as we were working through the civil engineering and looking at the site plan and speaking with the pastor, we realized that our estimations of where we had put the gymnasium piece left us still a considerable distance from the drain easement that's kind of towards the back. We thought, we were kind of being very conservative. And the pastor said, hey, based on what we have in our attendance for the fall, we need more kids' classrooms. And so if we can get more, you know, space for kids' ministry, that'd be great. So we're coming back to you today to seek approval on a, basically we've moved it 35 feet towards the drain easement, so that'd be towards the west. And, but everything else has stayed the same. All the materials have stayed the same, everything else that had previously been approved has stayed the same. We're essentially just expanding the kids' ministry area by 35 more feet, which gives us two more rooms.
How many, how many more square feet?
It is 2,115 square feet.
Addition, not additional?
Additional from, additional from the previous special land use.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
So almost doubling what you had proposed before, okay.
Yeah, we had added like 10 feet before. We had enough for like the locker rooms for the gymnasium, like restrooms and things like that for the gymnasium. And what we did is we actually just expanded out the previous kids' rooms that were there.
Okay.
And it's good. It was one of those things that the pastor, Pastor Mike, he was, you know, really kicking around, hey, do we go back? And I said, it's okay, you know, we can keep going and moving through the process with the building department and everybody else and we'll just come back and, and take a look at this and go back for another special land use.
Okay. All right, thank you. To the board, any questions for the petitioner? Okay.
Yes, Chairman. Now it's going 35 feet, has, have we sent a notice? The notice has been sent to all of, okay. Because the last time they were here, when they talked to us about it, they, they didn't have a real problem with the building as long as it was covered and protected visually and you put in more...
There was, basically that, this actually, you know, so one of the challenges was like privacy, this actually gives more privacy because now the parking lot is screened even more.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, thank you. This is the only special, public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending body and ultimately the Township Board will act on the recommendation that we offer. At this point, anyone is free to offer any comments or ask questions for what's being Going once, going twice.
Was it about him?
This is about the church, yeah, this is about the Bible Church. No, okay. All right, back to the board, to the planner for her comments.
Chairman Moffett, I think we just need a minor clarification from the applicant. So the very first page of the site plan indicates that the second building addition is 8,000 square feet and the current, the previous one was 2,115. Is that correct, Chad? I just wanted to make sure that all of our numbers are consistent.
What's the question, Julie?
So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page and that this total addition is 10,115 square feet.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Other than that, I don't have any issues with the site plan. It's consistent with the zoning ordinance as far as facade materials. No lighting is proposed on that side of the building. That would be a nuisance to the neighbors. The only thing that I would recommend is maybe just adding some landscaping along that southern property line between the building and the residential properties to the south.
Okay, in addition to what's already there?
Correct. Other than that, I don't have any concerns with the proposed modification.
Okay, all right, thank you. You agree with additional landscaping?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, we may disapprove the request, or we may table it to evaluate the information further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snyder.
Move to recommend, move to recommend approval to the Township Board for the modified site plan special land use 23-20, Chad Asman, RLA Studio 47905 Hayes Road, parcel number 2307-25-400-017, located south of 22 Mile Road, west side of Hayes Road, Shelby Bible Church Building addition. The applicant has met the standards in the zoning, in the zoning ordinance, including Section 6.5 special land use standards and Section 4.4 in the Township zoning ordinance. The proposed site plan must comply with all Planning Commission and departmental comments.
Support. Moved by Snyder, supported by Meredith. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck. This is the last time, don't come back again. Tell you, a point of personal privilege, I'm gonna ask this young lady to come up with her whatever question she has before we go to, you know, before we go on to the next one, because...
I'm moving to Shelby Township.
Yeah.
And I've never attended any of these meetings.
Okay, God bless you.
Pardon me?
You're lucky, okay.
Well, no, I'm not lucky because I just purchased a condominium in the Emerald Creek Estates and I've already had water in my basement.
Okay.
And now I hear that somebody wants to fill in part of the pond.
No, no, he's, there, he may fill in a piece of it for some of the development, but then they're, they're opening part of it. Part of what they're gonna have to prove to the engineer and to the Department of Public Works is that the water that's moved off their property finds its way off the, is maintained or going through the drain and there's a drain right behind it. So there is a process for, for them to do that. So this doesn't get approved until the engineers of the township say it's okay, that it's not gonna impact your house or anyone else's.
Oh, so the engineering department has to approve it.
Correct.
If they don't approve it, then what happens? They come back in front of you again?
Then they have to create, they have to switch their plans, modify their plans for them to approve it or it doesn't get built. The engineers don't approve it, it doesn't get built.
Okay, now, do we, can we attend the engineering meeting or present something to them?
You can communicate with the, the planning department, they can kind of tell you what's going on as much as they know, yeah.
Yeah, I can update you, if you just call the planning department, I can update you on the process of that engineering review.
So it's the planning department?
It's Department of Public Works along with our engineers that hold those meetings.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I mean, I'm devastated, I lived in one house for 45 years and I think I'm moving to someplace nicer and now all of a sudden I hear there's all kinds of stuff going on, so I was concerned.
Why don't you, make sure you put your name and your phone number down and then Julie will make note of it and then you guys can, you can, you can contact and she can kind of help walk you through a little bit more on the process.
The process, yeah.
Okay.
So this doesn't mean they're gonna start something?
No, 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 there's, there's still, and actually it hasn't been approved. All we, all that was done was recommended that they, that it, should be considered to be approved and then ultimately the Township Board's gonna have to, would have to approve it. But it has to go to engineering and that has to get worked out. And so, no, we don't let people build things however they want to, okay? There are standards and they're gonna have to live up to them. At this point, we just can't, we don't, we don't engineer it yet, you know, but it will get engineered and it'll get engineered to make sure that it doesn't have any impact on the neighbors. So this is not like there's gonna be water running into, that they're filling this and you're gonna be flooded out, okay? That's why, that's why this process exists, to make sure stuff like that doesn't happen, okay?
Thank you, yeah, I heard some of the comments and I know that all that was discussed was this winding of the road and, yeah.
There's more, yeah, again, it, listen, anytime, anytime, and again, my family's lived in here since 1973, so it's been built out a little bit since then, so. So if people adopt it, say, that's what, 50, what is it, 50 years, 16, 50, 50 years, yeah, we've been here, we've been here for 50 years. If we stop building then, this, this place would look a whole lot different. But oftentimes people, you know, change and impact and the roads and all that stuff, it's an emotional thing. But again, that's why there are processes that exist to protect everybody that lives here, you know? Just because my family, and we couldn't say because we moved here, okay, we're the last ones moving in here, you know, the rest of you can, you know? No, there is a process for everybody that wants to live here, if they live within the rules, to be able to move in here, okay? But we're gonna make sure that it doesn't negatively impact folks, okay? You're welcome. All right.
I've already had people clear water, my basement ready, huh?
No worries.
Thank you.
Chairman Moffett, if I can add to, I mean, these ponds have been in existence for many years. I'm not sure as far as the maintenance on them, but once they go through the engineering process, I mean, they'll have to maintain them and I'm sure there's some areas of these pond where they have, I know that they've had to been, they had to be unplugged numerous times to go out there, so I think it might resolve some of the issues that the residents are experiencing currently.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is zoning ordinance amendments, it's a public hearing. Do we have a notice to be read?
Yes. Charter Township of Shelby Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, is considering multiple amendments to the following sections of the zoning ordinance. Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb, Michigan, an ordinance to amend Article Five, Section 5.24 of the Charter Township of Shelby zoning ordinance to regulate temporary signs in the township and provide procedures for the revocation of certificate of zoning compliance approvals, repealer, severability, penalty, and effective date. The Planning Commission will meet on... The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, November 13th, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the proposed amendment. The zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Morris, Secretary, published October 18th, 2023, in the Macomb Daily.
Okay, thank you. The planner?
Thank you, Chairman. The planning department modifies the zoning ordinance occasionally where we see, and this is just where we see needed modifications, and this is just us perfecting the ordinance. Temporary signs are being redefined in the zoning ordinance, along with commercial use of the property, home occupation, and then the temporary sign ordinance, we're modifying it. Next year, we will be doing a complete overhaul of our sign ordinance, but at this time, we are just addressing the temporary sign ordinance in itself. If this is, if the Planning Commission accepts these modifications to the ordinance, they will be introduced at the next Township Board meeting.
To the board, any questions for the petitioner, or any comments on what's being proposed? Hearing none is, oh, anyone from the public wish to comment on the, on these amendment See, nobody nodding their head or standing up, so I'm assuming that's a no. Is there a motion to forward these amendments on to the Township Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval to the Township Board for the proposed zoning ordinance amendments as presented.
Support.
Move by Turner, supported by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next item is under Old Business Site Plan Number 18-19, Frank DePonyo. Do you want to, is there a petitioner here?
The petitioner is here.
Name and address?
Frank DePonyo, 113 Angel View Court, Rochester, Michigan.
And you're requesting what from this body?
Site plan approval extension.
Okay.
It was previously extended, and we're, we're looking to extend it again. We had a potential tenant, but he's not going to be online for about another 12 months or so.
So you're looking for a, oh yeah, the extension will give you two years, so two years you'll get it done?
Yes.
All right. Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to extend Site Plan Number 18-19 for Frank DePonyo, DNR Land Development LLC, located on Simoni Drive, north side of 23 Mile, between Van Dyke and Mound, parcel number 23-07-16-376-018, for a period of two years, starting on October 23rd, 2023, and to expire on October 23rd, 2025.
Support.
Move by Cassaly, supported by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Cassaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Planning Director's Report?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few items on my end here. The November 27th meeting will be canceled, so we'll see you at the following meeting, which is December 11th. Just wanted to bring to your attention, too, the township owns Cafe Picorelli right up front here, and the clerk's office will be using it as a temporary early voting center. With that, they're making-
Did you get a free bowl of soup, you love?
A plate of pasta. Well, with that, they will be closing off the driveway on Van Dyke for this and putting in just a temporary drive from the main campus, from Jack Millard Boulevard. So with that, they're just going to be putting in a gravel, restriping the parking lot where needed, and installing, not installing, restriping some handicap parking spaces.